Welcome to our County Commission Candidate Forum. My name is Ursula Meiner. I'm Lawrence Branch NAACP President. I want to give a special thank you to the League of Women Voters of Lawrence and Douglas County for partnering with the NAACP in hosting these forums. Members of the Lawrence Branch NAACP and the League of Women Voters have been working side by side to register voters in our high schools and at community events for years. This partnership is very compatible since both organizations are not partisan. Our political activities are focused around voter registration, voter education, and most importantly voter turnout at the polls. We appreciate the support of our organizations that have received from Watkins Museum of History and the Lawrence Public Library. The candidates participating in today's forum all have primary challengers. County Commission candidates who did not have a primary challenger were invited to talk with voters during the informal visiting time. Will the following candidates please stand when I introduce you? Now let's review this afternoon's format for our candidates and the audience. The questions I will ask were developed by the members of the NAACP and League of Women Voters. Each candidate will receive questions in advance. Each candidate will have a specific amount of time to answer the questions. Our timekeeper, Anok Moray, will tell you when time is up. Respectfully ask the candidates to stay within the time allotted for each question. The seating arrangement we have today was determined randomly. You can see that the candidates were seated according to districts. The order the candidates was determined by drawing numbers, and order of candidates within each district was determined by drawing names. Additionally, the nameplates are printed in blue for Democratic candidates and red for Republican candidates. I will rotate which district goes first to answer each question, then the next person will answer so on and so on. There will be no additional questions from the audience. Instead, we have asked the candidates to stay after the formal question, and you can visit with them. The League of Women Voters and the NAACP cannot endorse candidates, but all candidates are free to share campaign materials, seek volunteers, and answer additional questions. Now let me introduce our Douglas County Commission candidates in the order that they are seated. Mike Kelso, Jean Dorsey, Shannon Reed, Lisa Larson, Erica Anderson, and Pam McDermott. Nicholas Matthews from District 5 and John Lambeth from District 3 originally planned to participate in the forum were unable to make it today. So let's begin with the first question. On May 22nd, 2024, the County Commission approved the County Sustainability Office Climate Adaptation and Action Plan. Do you support this plan? Why or why not? You have 90 seconds, Mike Kelso.
First off, I'd like to...
I think it was so.
No. First off, I'd like to thank the NAACP and the Lawrence League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Thank you very much for inviting me, and thank all of you for taking time out of your Saturday afternoon. This is important to you. I can tell. You wouldn't be here if you didn't care. The Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, it's a very, very broad framework that we at the county level, at the development level, we need to take it into account in every large and even small project that we undertake. Our world is ever-changing, and those things that we do, whether a new neighborhood, new business, we need to know how that's going to affect us, and even those beyond the borders of Douglas County, how it affects the world. I support the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, but it doesn't stand by itself. It is just a that. It's a guideline. We don't have any policies out of it yet, and as we apply it, we need to factor in all of our other plans. We have a lot of plans in Douglas County. We've got a lot of policies in Douglas County, a lot of regulations, and they need to all work together, particularly as it ties to Plan 2040. And I look forward to using this plan to figure out where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jean Dorsey.
I do support the plan and the fact that it gives us good aspirational goals. I have a few questions about it there. Talking about consideration for people making 200% of the poverty level wage, that's for 2024 for a family of four, that's $31,000. So if you double that, that's $62,500. The median income for a family in Douglas County is $65,000. So you can see that affects a lot of people. District 4 includes Udora Township, and there the median household salary is over $110,000. In my area to the east of Massachusetts, I'm guessing that the average salary is a little lower than that. So we do need to consider race and income when we're trying to adapt policies for this. And I have 15 seconds. So it needs a little work, but I think overall it's in good shape. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Shannon Reed.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. I absolutely support this plan. The Douglas County Commission approved the adoption of our Climate Adaptation and Action Plan unanimously after several years of pointed community engagement work to determine what our residents believe are the biggest threats and most adverse impacts that are likely facing our local environment, population, and economy due to the global climate crisis that we collectively face. The fact is, the effects are quite numerous and ever escalating, so I do believe that it's a core responsibility of local government to determine strategies for how we can mitigate risk better and how to cultivate more resilience across our social, economic, and environmental systems alike. What I'm most proud of about this plan is that it focused on the most vulnerable and likely to be impacted community members from the get-go. It was rooted in the fact that chronic stressors like poverty, disability, language and education barriers, poor mental health, and systemic oppression like racism does in fact put folks at higher risk for experiencing the negative or catastrophic effects of what this climate crisis looks like here: increased flooding, extreme heat, riskier weather patterns, drought, increased energy consumption and costs, and more. We need a true diversity of tactics to build more resilience into our community, and I believe that's what our adopted action plan sets a framework for. We can and should look at how to diversify our community's energy production. We can and should look at how to prevent building and regulatory floodplain. We can and should look at how to respond better to the acute risks that our unsheltered residents face while living outside in these conditions.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you very much to both organizations for putting this forum on today. I do support the plan wholeheartedly. We also heard it at the City Commission a while back, and I do support it. But what I really like about the plan is how it was developed and how it was done. Because what of the plan, climate change, that's indisputable. We're past that. With all the sciences there, we're past even talking about whether or not it's true. So the plan starts with acknowledging that all of our communities in Douglas County are different, and that we all, each one of us, from the small towns to our rural area to the city of Lawrence, that we all have unique challenges, as well as we're all starting at a different place. So I think it's really important that this acknowledgement was done at the beginning because I think it does set us up for success that meets the needs of all of our communities so that no one gets left behind and we come together stronger. It also helps us to understand that climate change is an equity issue, and I truly believe that because it impacts communities differently, especially marginalized communities who often take the brunt of climate change. I think the staff did an excellent job, I really do, about reaching out to the communities, the marginalized communities first. I thought that was just excellent to start with that. And they built the plan through the lenses of our most vulnerable community members, and I thought that was really good. And by building the plan through the eyes of our most vulnerable... Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Erica Anderson.
Thank you. And thank you to the women, the NAACP and the League of Women Voters for actually hosting today. And thank you to all of you that actually came out because this is an important conversation. I really appreciate the fact that we are now taking a look at five districts, right? So we have five districts now here in Douglas County. We now have representation across all of our districts for unincorporated Douglas County now. As I take a look at this plan, I think it's an amazing plan. I know many colleagues, and I've worked with several of the colleagues that crafted this plan. And as several of the other colleagues across this table have mentioned, this plan has been developed over many years, and a lot of work went into it, a lot of research and a lot of data, and a lot of our special populations contributed to this plan. Now, what concerns me about the plan is the fact that we now have two new districts that are coming to the table. But our current county commissioners passed this resolution in May. I wish this resolution had been passed in January, when we would have two new districts at the table to pass this resolution. As we talk about inclusivity and we talk about bringing all parties to the table, I think it would have been a better resolution to have brought both districts, all five districts, to the table to vote on this resolution, and that's what I would have liked to have seen.
Thank you. Next we have Pat McDermott.
Pam McDermott.
Pam?
Yeah. That is my mistake. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. That happened on another email recently, too. Wow. Okay. I'll answer to that, too. I do want to say, though, real quick, that Rick Anderson just arrived in the room, and he's one of the other candidates. So 90 seconds isn't very long to communicate about an entire plan, and so I plan to have a short video where I unpack some more detailed thoughts. And for now, let me say that the plan, I read through what's on the county website, that the plan began in the fall of 2021 with 10 community coordinators that were trained by Climate and Energy Projects. So that's Dorothy Barnett's nonprofit, and she is NextEra's representative and lobbyist. The process involved recording the diverse experiences, and I'm quoting, of 115 individuals in Douglas County. Some of them were paid. And then a survey was sent throughout the community that garnered about 500 responses from Douglas County residents about their climate change concerns. So I read that as about 0.005% of our population. And when you look at the process, particularly the survey questions, it seems that the end could have maybe been determined from the beginning. That's my concern. So I have questions. I'm not yes or no here, but I have questions. What's the cost? Do we really have any idea? Will it lock up land? Will it impede our ability to grow food? What are the tax implications? What about private property rights? Are we holding things in tension? And what about industrial wind and solar on prime farmland?
Thank you. The next person we will start with is Shannon Reed. The question is, "The Douglas County website offers an initiative about race inequality. Is there one area that stands out where you would like to make a change in Douglas County? What steps would you take?" Two minutes.
Thank you, Ursula. I really appreciate this question because it honestly prompted me to go find a page on our county website that I couldn't quite recall, but that I did remember reading during my last election cycle shortly after it was published in 2020. The page that you're referring to is a broad overview of the Government Alliance of Race and Equity Initiative that Douglas County joined during that year, and it highlights four areas of focus to help guide the county administration's broad work in various critical issues that are facing our community. Specifically, it offers some quick guiding principles for how to assess for and address the current and historical realities of how racism and other forms of oppression show up in the real lives of Douglas County residents. For audience reference, I think it's worth noting that those four broad topics, some of which we had some discussion about and have questions about on this stage so far, are organizational and employee development, criminal justice programs and services, open space preservation and planning, climate action and adaptation planning. To be candid with y'all, and this won't be surprising to anyone here who knows me by now, there is a lot that I could say about all of these four focus areas, and there's a lot that stands out to me about each one of them. But I'm the one that's on the clock today, so I'll try to effectively summarize that what really stands out to me is how explicit even that brief page on the county's website is in acknowledging the issues of race and equity are indeed a part of the work of all of county government, both within our core responsibilities and the collaborative initiatives and partnerships that we help convene for the benefit of our community. A quick example that's tangible that I'm interested in exploring further in a few different spaces is how do we find different ways to increase land access options for local food producers of color or other marginalized histories who really want to contribute their skills and their knowledge to creating a more healthy, robust, secure, and culture-rich food system for us? That's just one example of how I think we apply race and equity.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Larson.
So as I read through the doc or the page of the website, you know, a lot of the language and ideas are similar to what we see in the city. But the area that I would like to emphasize on the county side of it is that I would like to see more work with tenants and landlords in the eviction process. This, to me, is an equity issue. Renters occupy about 55% of the houses, at least here in Lawrence, and evictions have the biggest impact on our families. Generally, folks who have low income, as well as marginalized community members, have the biggest impact. So the county has a program called the Housing Stabilization Collaborative, and they're doing great work, and they provide renter assistance across the board. And Gabby Sprague, she does excellent work with them, and she's been working on a mediation program for tenants and landlords in an additional effort to prevent evictions. So the program has been slow to start because Kansas has some very clear-cut laws about eviction. And what I believe the county could potentially do was to provide some leadership in working with the courts to possibly either fund or support a program that landlords and tenants can get behind and have the conversations to work together to find ways to prevent evictions from getting on the tenants' records. So the courts are currently building a program that includes tenants and landlords, but it's in its very early stages. So I believe the county could become more involved in that, at least in supporting this and finding ways that can enhance the process and keep more people housed.
Next we have Erica Anderson.
When I went to the county's website and took a look at the Race and Equity site, there's a fair amount of information on the site, as our colleagues have stated. But the first change that I would actually make is actually in regards to the reporting about the work that's actually on the website. It looks like the work actually did begin in 2020. However, I'm not really seeing the objectives or any reporting outcomes on the site. So I'd really like to see some more transparency about the work that's actually happening with the work groups and some links to the actual objectives, the goals, and what has actually been happening over the last several years. I'd like to see their budgets. I'd like to see the work that's actually happening at the local level. I'd like to see the stakeholders that are engaged. I'd like to see a timeline, the past, the present, to where are we going in the future so that we can really track the work that has been happening. My background is in public health. I have a PhD in public health. I have a master's in public affairs, and I've done a lot of work in policy. So when it comes to data and analytics and taking a look at the work that we've done and tying it to outcomes, I really want to see that, and that's really important to me. Because when we take a look at tying what we do to dollars, it's important that the dollars that we use, the tax-paying dollars that we are spending, that we are tying outcomes to that work, and that we are showing what it is that we are doing, and we're being transparent. And so I want to see that on the Race and Equity page. And if I were to add anything to it, I would add justice, and I would add a little bit more around equity.
Thank you. Next we have Pam McDermott.
All right. I thought about this question a lot, and there's several doors I feel like I could have chosen to walk through to answer. But I want to talk about it maybe from a little different perspective. From an origin perspective or a strengths-based perspective, Kansas, Douglas County, and Lawrence in particular have always been invested in racial equity and equality. We have a rich history here. Lawrence was founded in 1854 by abolitionists from Massachusetts and named for the abolitionists who funded them. This began a border war for seven years that led to a civil war. We have the Battle of Blackjack led by John Brown, a radical abolitionist. In 1861, we won the battle for Kansas to be admitted into the Union as a free state. We fought on the side of the Union in the Civil War. Pro-slavery forces murdered 160 men and boys during Quantrill's raid. We were home to the Jayhawkers, a free state militia and vigilante group. We were the epicenter for abolitionist activity here in Kansas. So we have a rich history to build from. Yes, there have been injustices since 1865, and many began to be addressed during the Civil Rights Movement. But we have always been a welcoming city, always a place where freedom matters, and we should make sure that we are inspiring the next generation with this powerful story that we've inherited and build from it as we continue to address current issues. I think that this is something, from my perspective, that's missing in all that's being done. Lastly, we've been foster parents for eight years, and through that experience, I have two takeaways that relate to equity. Family structure and literacy go a long way to reconciling many of the equity issues that people are experiencing today, and we should be matching our resources with the things that our population needs.
For race and equity issues, to me, it all starts with education. It all starts with listening, actively listening, not pretending to listen. It's each and every one of our responsibilities to go out and have those courageous conversations that take you out of your comfort zone, that take you to the place where we all need to be. We have to learn from our past. Our past is our present. Our present is our past. Those things that have happened, we need to learn about them. And as I thought about this question, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, what do I, a 60-year-old white man that grew up in Johnson County, had a fantastic education, had a very privileged life, how can I answer this question? I need to talk to people. I need to know your experience. I need to know your life so that we can put the various things in place to make sure that we learn from it. I work for a fantastic company that has very much embraced DEI, and we have an entire paid business unit, but that is a responsibility for a company of 12,000 employees. I applaud them for it. I applaud their efforts they try and give to our employees, and I believe we need to do that, starting with the employees of Douglas County. It starts with the county commission and works its way down that we need to learn. We need to get out, we need to talk to people, whether it's at a coffee shop, whether it's in a neighborhood association, whether it's at a fundraising event for whatever group. If we don't learn from our past, we will repeat our mistakes.
Thank you. Next we have Jean Dorsey.
Of the four areas mentioned, organization, employee development, criminal justice, open space, and climate action, I think where we've made the most progress is on the criminal justice area. Last four years, we've had Drug Court created, we've had the Behavioral Health Court created. Many of those affect the poor and the other races. So I think that that's made progress. The other three areas, I don't see too much happening currently, so we should work on all of those areas. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to question number three. What is your opinion about the purpose and effectiveness of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council? In two minutes, we will start with Erica Anderson.
The purpose of the council is to provide a working forum to support communications and collaborative coordination between and among key criminal justice system officials, advisory bodies, agencies, departments, and community leaders to promote public health, public safety, and an effective, fair, and efficient criminal justice system in our community. That's what is actually on the website. And what I really liked when I actually went to the site and took a look, they actually have a dashboard that actually shows a whole host of data and analytics related to the work. The work that the group is doing is quite robust, and I'm very impressed with the work that is actually happening. We need this type of program in our community. It's so important when we take a look at justice-involved programs to ensure that our youth have a safe place to go, that we have mitigation strategies in place for our youth, but also for our adults. We need to take a look at our criminal justice system and understand what is currently happening in our system. We need to take a look at our budget and how we are appropriating those funds here in Douglas County and ensure that we are being transparent about how we are spending those dollars, and ensure that we are being transparent on our website as well so that our community members, our tax-paying citizens, know how those dollars are being actually spent and that we are tying them to the outcomes that our community members are actually seeing, whether it be youth, whether it be adult, whether it be individuals that are actually coming into our community and are going into the justice-involved system. When we take a look at the foster care system, if we have foster youth that are ending up in the justice-involved system, we need to ensure that as they are leaving the JI system, that they have a place to go the minute they leave, and that they are not ending up homeless.
Next we have Pam McDermott.
So I applaud all of the people who are working on the CJCC. I feel proud to have been part of the group of people who advocated for its creation back in 2016. We knew that we needed a place where there could be collaboration between all the parties involved in our criminal justice system, and I actually just recently looked at the dashboard, and that was part of the work that we were advocating for back then. So I do wonder sometimes if leadership might be missing. I think leaders are, they figure out ways to remove people who refuse to think about the whole, and I frequently hear across our community when I talk to people about entities that don't work well together, frequently. LMH and Burt Nash, the DA's office in the police department, the city, and USD 497. That prevents collaboration that is desperately needed when those entities don't work well together. So I believe in their mission, and we want to make sure that real people are being helped by the work that they're doing.
Next we have Mike Kelso.
I could give a real quick answer and say, go back to my answer for number two. It is about listening and learning. That's what this group, and it's a large group of people that have come together for this group, and they're learning from each other. But does the majority of our county, of the cities in our county, do they even know about this group? This group suffers from a fate that all organizations that need to get their message out suffers from these days. How do you get that message out? There is no longer a Channel 6. The number of printed newspapers continues to shrink every day. Some people don't like going online to get their news. We need to get that figured out. How are we going to get word about what we are doing, about what groups like this are doing, and doing for the good of the county, for the good of a lot of people? They are doing good work. We, as a governing body, we've got to lead by example and get the message out to citizens of county.
Next we have Jean Dorsey.
My experience with the criminal justice system is seven speeding tickets, so I thought I needed a little more background, so I did go to the Douglas County Sheriff's Citizens Academy this year, and I learned a lot from that experience, and I would recommend that to anybody who wants to know more about law enforcement. I think it was Wednesday night, they reduced the, reduction in membership from, I'm going to round off, from about 25 people to approximately 12 people on the coordinating committee. I think that was a good step. 25 people on a committee is just too much to get anything done. I talked to a couple of people on the committee, and they said, well, many people don't show up. About eight people talk, and the rest are silent. So I think by cutting it down to 12, it will be a more effective committee, and I think in general, our criminal justice system is working pretty well. So, thanks.
Next we have Shannon Reed.
This is a very well-timed question, since we did it...
This is a very well-timed question, since we did, in fact, just adopt new bylaws for our CJCC on Wednesday night. As Jean just mentioned, we went, currently 23 members going to 15 members, and got real intentional about the professions and the positions within the criminal justice system that we wanted to make sure were represented, and how we define the community member participation. So those new bylaws have a reworked vision and mission statement to really communicate our intended purpose, and to more clearly articulate how we can improve our effectiveness. I think we've learned a lot in recent years. We've had some important progress, and we can get more focused and more strategic. I'm really proud of our council's openness and diligent participation in the past year throughout an assessment, a really rigorous assessment that we did about how our CJCC is functioning alongside newly published national CJCC standards, which led to the adoption of the new bylaws, and I'm looking forward to more focused conversations in the future. To me, the very core purpose is simply to provide a regular working forum for powerful decision-makers across the local legal system in our community to convene with each other and talk through issues, and to convene with community members who live with the very powerful impacts of those decisions. I believe that that's really what the core intent and purpose is, and that we have been effective in convening hard discussions and learning how to lean into data as a tool that helps us assess how our systems are doing with regularity and to problem-solve along the way. A recent example is the development of a local mobile competency restoration program to try reducing really lengthy jail stays that are completely unjust, and long-drawn-out court proceedings that have a whole host of consequences, while improving access to treatment as soon as possible for individuals who are in the custody of our county jail.
Next, we have Lisa Larson.
So I do believe the purpose of the CJCC, which is to provide a sort of a collaborative setting for key organizations and community members who are involved in our justice, criminal system in Douglas County, provides that nice platform so that they can each speak with each other and understand what is their organization doing, and as well as how does it fit in with the entire justice system within Douglas County. I also appreciate that they're evaluating the justice system that we have and how it impacts our community members. Now, I was on the CJCC board early in my term on city commission, and one of the things we did, it was during a period where we hired Northeast University to evaluate traffic stops in Douglas County. So the data indicated that people of color were three times more likely to be stopped than their white peers. So I do appreciate that the data is being collected, and how they're collecting it, I think it's appropriate, but what I would like to do is explore more about what are we using this data for, and how are we using it to address the systemic issues that the data has brought to light.
Thank you. In closing, what issues have not been addressed that are important to use? You have three minutes. We'll start with Pam McDermott.
Three minutes, you said?
Well, I've lived in Douglas County for 40 years, since I came here to attend the University of Kansas. John and I have raised our five kids here. My seven, soon-to-be-nine grandchildren all live here. We're foster parents, currently have an eight-year-old, although we've had teenage boys mostly for the last several years. We started morning star church 32 years ago, and it has connected us to people from every kind of background who work all across this county, and I appreciate the hard-working, ordinary people who really are the backbone and the lifeblood of Douglas County, and I'm grateful for the opportunities that we have had, and I want Douglas County to be affordable and welcoming for young people and young families. So I ran for public office for the first time in 2020 after a few years of watching how our county commissioners interacted with citizens. If all political power is inherent in the people, as the Kansas Constitution says, something seemed very out of whack. Douglas County has not been sensitive to the enormous tax burden on citizens. Currently, according to the books that we can see, they have $195 million in cash. As a taxpayer, I find that outrageous and offensive, and I think you should too. You can compare that to 2016, when they had 56 million. So our budget's grown 233% over the last seven years. This is irresponsible and simply bad governance, in my opinion, and we have to address the budget and the taxes. I have stayed abreast of things going on in Douglas County in a more intentional way since 2020, and I was motivated to run for office back in April after the eight-hour marathon commissioner meeting regarding solar regulations. It ended with another unanimous vote, three to zero, that will fundamentally change Douglas County despite the very organized efforts and sensible compelling points made by over 60 citizens, mostly rural citizens, that were trying to educate the commissioners about the need to preserve some of the best farmland in the world. And I think this sort of thing happens over and over again here. It seems our elected officials and the people they hire don't see citizens as owners or experts in any way. They seem to think they're the experts, and they continue to raise taxes and spend excessive amounts of money to fund their priorities for Douglas County, rather than focusing on the simple things that allow people to own a home, raise a family, start a business, and enjoy taxpayer-funded places in safety, like the library and parks. So these are the issues that are of high concern to the people that I talk to as I'm running this year, and when I ran the last time, I spent most of my time door-to-door, and these are the things that I hear about.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Kelso.
Again, I want to thank the NACT and the Legal Women Voters for holding the summit, and thank all of you for coming out. There's obviously many issues facing Douglas County. No one, no one that I'm aware of, is real happy with the amount of tax dollars that we pay. Our mill rates, our tax rates, they haven't changed much, but the amount of tax we pay has, and that's simply because the value of our properties has increased. And that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. That's a good thing, the value of our property increases. But we need to put some thought, and in my mind, it's not rocket science, into how we can lower those mill rates and better spend our tax dollars, as Pam said down at the end. We need to be very intentional and very specific about how we spend those dollars at the county level. We need to come up with a plan for attracting the businesses and the people, and this, I believe, affects District Four, probably more than any other district in the county, from the east. We know change is coming. There's a huge amount of development happening right across our county border with Panasonic, and all of the businesses are going to feed Panasonic. And even though the Panasonic officials have said, well, we think most of the people that we're going to hire, they already live somewhere in the Kansas City area, but if somebody's going to start working there, and maybe, let's say they live in Leeceum or Blue Springs, as somebody that used to commute 50 miles each way every day to downtown Kansas City, that commute does get old after a while. We need to give them a reason to come to Douglas County. We need to figure out what kind of housing needs they need, and whether it's single-family, whether it's duplexes, whether it's quads, whether it's townhomes or apartments, but we need to start, and we need to start now, or we will miss out. And by having more rooftops, we will have more tax dollars, and then we can lower everybody's tax rates. And for new neighborhoods, for old neighborhoods, again, I don't think it takes rocket science. I consider myself an educated individual. I'm not an expert in it, but for any new neighborhoods, come up with a plan. Put solar on every roof. Where there's a new strip mall, where there's a new big box store, put solar on every roof. Where there's a big parking lot, put solar in the parking lot. We can do that, and we can incentivize it by coming up with a method where maybe for, say, the first 10 years, the homeowners, if they put solar on the roof, they're not going to pay for that extra value that the solar is going to add to their house. Let's say it adds $30,000. Don't tax them at all for that $30,000 the first year. Maybe tax them only 2% the second year, 100% by the last year. Thank you again, and I look forward to being the first county commissioner for the new Douglas County District Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Dorsey.
I went and had a salesman come to my house to give me a quote on solar the other day, and my little house would require $18,000 to put in solar, but I'm probably going to do it because I think everybody should do their part. I'm not going to repeat what others have said. I'll just bring up a couple of new issues to me anyway. I would like, and I think by having five seats, we will have more transparency on the county commission, because currently, two commissioners can't even talk to each other outside of the commission room. Because they can't, some things are buried in the policies and procedures, so a few things I would like to change is first, follow state law and have the county commissioners approve all elected officials' salaries out in the open. The commissioners have gotten an 8.3% raise the last two years, and I'm sure those in the room haven't enjoyed that kind of raise recently. So just, let's be more transparent about everything. We don't have a buy-in Douglas County first policy in our purchasing. We go to where we want to. Now, many times, you have to go outside of Douglas County to get what you want, but I think we should always be buying in Douglas County if we could. An example of that is the county counselor recently resigned Stevens and Brand and went to work for a law firm in Kansas City, Missouri. So we kept him on, and now we're giving a quarter of a million dollars to a law firm in Jackson County, Missouri. There's plenty of good attorneys in Orange, so I think we should have switched. Also, I think it's time to just hire in-house counsel, because we can get a good attorney for $150,000 a year, still have $100,000 left over for a specialty of work, like when Rand Township sues Douglas County, and the citizens there are paying twice for each side of the argument. And we could even save $100,000, by my calculation, by going to inside counsel. And I am about out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa, we have Shannon Reed.
Thanks, Ursula. So one key issue that has been touched on a bit here today, but that I believe deserves more focus, is one that is undeniably impacting our community and our nation as a whole in a lot of different ways, and that's housing inequities. We have a sincere lack of affordable housing for all of our residents, and that's a fact for a whole lot of reasons. This key issue is really important to me because I grew up here in poverty, in housing instability, experiencing homelessness for a lot of different reasons and pressure points, and in my work as a domestic violence advocate, working with vulnerable folks experiencing trauma, that is a key barrier that is faced daily. So it is something that I have been focused on in my time as your county commissioner so far. Fair housing, access, and affordability is such a huge topic, but there are approximately five million rabbit holes. I think we could go down together today, but I'll just pick a couple relevant points to the conversation so far, especially based on some of what we've heard from other candidates. So an idea that's been circulating in our community is about rolling back the county's mill levy to lower property taxes overall. It sounds like a simple solution, right? Just drastically drive down one tax rate to give some folks with homes some relief on annual expenses. But it is simply not that simple, and it is narrowly, it is a very narrowly focused idea that leaves behind so many folks, from my perspective. I heard my opponent mention earlier, 55% of Lawrence's renters, those folks aren't paying property taxes, but they are benefiting from all of the services that are funded by the county commission, in addition to all the other taxing authorities. So I think that we have to look at things a lot more broadly, and when we talk about an idea that is, that only affects approximately half of our residents, and that include, which, by the way, I just want to point out that the county is one taxing entity, your tax bill, if you're a homeowner, has multiple taxing entities. The county commission has rolled back the mill levy a few bits in recent years, and I will not oversell that. As was mentioned by other candidates, property valuations are really what's driving the increase in property taxes. I am completely aware of and empathetic to how that has real impact for some folks, and I'm interested in a holistic picture about what housing looks like for all people in our community. So we really need a diversity of tactics, which include really people-centered policies and targeted funding to affect real change in the realm of housing affordability, and particularly. It's just so critical that we figure out all the different ways that we can affect change, and not just rolling back property taxes for half of our population. We need property taxes to fund a lot of services.
Next, we have Lisa Larson.
All due respect, renters do pay property taxes. They pay it through the rents.
Yeah.
Just wanted to point that out. So I do have an issue with the property taxes. So in recent years, the county has transferred a significant amount of funds to non-budgeted funds. They have about $123 million in unencumbered funds. This is cash on hand. Now, these are funds that each year that they've said aren't needed to adequately fund our government in that given year. Now, during the term of my incumbent, of the incumbent in District Two, she has voted to transfer $57 million to these non-budgeted, unencumbered funds. Not once have I heard her say, or demand, or to fight for lowering, or to vote for lowering property taxes during that time with at least some of these funds. So keeping these large surpluses while property taxes are going through the roof is definitely an equity issue. It affects renters, it affects property owners across the board, especially for those on a fixed income. So I have met people that are struggling to stay above water with expenses of the county taxes, as well as other taxes, as well as just across the board. Their income just isn't keeping pace with the largely, the yearly increases in county property taxes. I met a property owner, North Lawrence Jan, and she said, on a fixed income, and she says that it's getting so bad that she doesn't know if she can stay in Lawrence, because those property taxes keep going up. And they're, you know, people are really struggling out there. People that are on the edge, that are on the margins, they're really struggling out there with the taxes. And I'm not saying other things aren't going up, but this is something that county commissioners can do something about, and I think they need to. So I'm going to challenge everybody sitting up here today, and as well as the county commissioners themselves, to lower, to make lowering property taxes a primary mission as you go forward as county commissioner. I want you to commit, I would like for you to commit, I'm sorry, to lowering property taxes for Douglas County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Anderson.
Thank you. I absolutely agree, and one of the reasons I'm running as well is because I don't believe we need to go above the net neutral budget. And I also think that we have inequity in our property taxes. As I've been going door-to-door, what I'm primarily hearing in the unincorporated areas, because that's where I live, I'm hearing from property owners that they're not fixing up their homes because they don't want their property values to increase. If they have a broken window, they're not fixing it. If they need to fix their roof, and they can't get their insurance to pay for it, they're not fixing it. If they got a mouse that's crawling in on the basement floor, they're not fixing it. They're not fixing their siding, if they're the ones who have to pay for it. Because if they fix up their home, their property taxes are going to increase, because their neighbor fixed up their home, and their neighbor has told them, my property taxes increased, and now, as you just said, I may have to move. I may have to sell my home that I've had for 30 years, 40 years, and I may have to move. Or I met a gentleman when I was at my doctor's office who told me that his property was bought by the city or the county, and he was told to move. His mother had passed, his brother had passed, his uncle had passed, all within three months. He lived over by Mount Orion, over by KU, over by the tennis courts. They had a fair amount of property, and the property was purchased, and he was told, well, you can buy a house in town now. He was in his 60s. He had never in his life lived in town, and now he was going to live in town. And he said, I don't live in town. I don't even know what it's like to live in town. I've never in my life had a neighbor. That broke my heart. It's time for us in unincorporated- It's time for us in unincorporated areas to have a voice. And I will be a leader that will listen.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the candidates that were here today. Mike Kelso, Jean Dorsey, Shannon Reed, Lisa Larson, Erica Anderson, Pam McDermott, editors, candidates sat in the audience, and are also here. So I would like to thank everyone. So thank you very much for talking.